Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I call this meeting to order and declare a quorum. We have all members present this evening, along with our student board member. At this time, would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence? Mrs. Murray will be leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion, please?
Remove.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval? Student member concurs. We have an approved agenda. We'll move to approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the first motion to approve the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, January 18, 2022.
Mr. Gessford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the work session minutes? All those in favor of approval? All right, unanimous approval. Student member concurs.
The second motion is for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, January 18, 2022.
Gessford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes? All right, we'll move for approval. All those in favor? We have unanimous vote.
And my third motion is for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated January 18, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting for January 18? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have a unanimous vote and student member concurs. We have three sets of minutes that have been approved. We'll move to public comment. We have no one who has signed up in advance to speak. I will open the floor if there's anyone who would like to come forward. At this time, I'd like to read from policy KD, which speaks to public comment at a Board of Education meeting. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak? No? Okay. We'll move right into new business because we have no old business to conduct this evening. And our first item under new business is this evening's consent agenda with our supervisor of purchasing, Mr. Scott Bakel presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have two items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakel. Is there a motion for approval?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards and renewals for school furniture and equipment to Doron Inc. at a cost of $45,191 and Impact Office Products LLC at a cost of $27,134.40 and Technology Work Order System renewal to SolarWinds Inc. at a cost of $61,120.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Bakel? Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have one question. What is included in that tech work order system for $61,000? What does that specifically do for us?
So, I don't know if Joe's here, but I know it allows us to submit work orders for technology to fix problems throughout the system for staff. And it also is utilized to track equipment, laptops, things of that nature. They log all of that information, as well as, I think, they use it for tracking some fixes on equipment when they do, you know, network repairs and things of that nature. Here's Joe, and he'll be able to answer better than I.
All right. Did you hear the question?
I did not.
The question is, so what do we get for that tech work order system renewal from SolarWinds there? What does that system specifically do?
So, the work order system, it's a ticket system. So, when somebody at a school or somebody in this building has a problem, they enter it into the system. It allows the technicians on the other side to understand what's going on. They make comments. It's a dialogue that goes on. Sorry, I'm out of breath. The tickets have a status, so they open, they close, they're in progress, and things like that. So, it's how all the work is tracked over the course of time.
So, and then I think you mentioned something about, you know, the laptops and everything like that, if there's an issue with that. Is that something like, if my laptop is acting up, it will automatically send something to you, or I still need to call the help desk?
You still need to call the help desk or put in a ticket, but because it's, you know, the laptops are all part of this, we know the history on that particular laptop, so it tracks things that way as well.
And so, it maintains all that data as well?
Correct.
Okay. I was gonna say, it seemed like, you know, that all that stuff was stuff that you could do on an Excel spreadsheet, but if it's gonna maintain that, the history of that, okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
I'll just ask. My wife's a teacher in Frederick County, and she will complain about passwords and things, and I always say, put in a work order, because then they can track it. We have a lot of teachers in the audience. Do you have the same advice? Does it help you make purchasing decisions and see what to triage when it comes to?
We do say, put in a ticket, and people get tired of hearing that. But, you know, sometimes if you know somebody and you wait to call them, putting in the ticket, you know, there's dozens of people who are gonna see that and respond to it. So, it truly is the fastest way.
Does it help you make decisions?
Yes, and we can go back and look at things like passwords or a broken laptop or anything else and see where really the hot spots. So, it does provide trends and data like that.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll move to the vote. We're voting on Mr. Bickford's motion. Mrs. Murray, second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Student member concurs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
We have a large audience, and I'm not sure who's representing tonight. I think there's a school out there. It looks like it might be some Ruth A. Monroe teacher, so I guess we should at least acknowledge and say thank you for being here today.
How many are here from Ruth A. Monroe? Very good. Thank you. Some others? How many teachers are here?
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move to our second item of new business, which is the Board of Education's fiscal year 2023 draft budget. We have Dr. Michael, Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandonberg, and Mr. Sissler with us this evening.
The Board heard from me in great detail during our hour-and-a-half-long budget session. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Prue if he would just share a summary, and request him basically that the Board adopt my recommended budget as your draft budget for further consideration in the future. So, Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Members of the Board, you met in work session on December 21 of 2021 to review the superintendent's draft budget. Since then, we've received estimated state aid documents, some additional expense lines that have been revised, and today in work session, the superintendent presented his FY '23 recommended budget to you. The matter before you is to adopt that recommended budget as your draft budget. It then becomes the Board's document to have additional discussions with their funding partners, to amend and make edits, and then to have open for public hearing at a time to be determined, which is actually on your budget calendar. I believe that hearing is scheduled for, I wanna say March 3 is the date that's sticking in my head right now. The Budget Advocacy Review Committee will also begin to review the budget as you adopt it, and they will provide their review of the budget during the public hearing. You have a joint meeting with the Commissioners tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, March 8, and at this point, tentative approval of your budget is scheduled for Tuesday, March 15. If you have further questions about the matter in front of you or the documents, the finance team is here to answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion? Williams, I move to adopt the superintendent's FY 2023 Recommended General Fund Budget as the Board of Education's FY 2023 Draft General Fund Budget. Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Discussion? Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I do have one quick question. I know, you know, you made it very clear that this doesn't finalize anything that we're sending out. It's our draft, and we make our changes. And I know during our work session, President Williams discussed the calendar, and we have a calendar here for us. Is there something that, is that available to the public to view? And if so, how do they go and find that?
So, the budget itself?
The calendar, I should say, not necessarily the calendar for the process.
Calendar, I can't remember, I don't know if Eric remembers whether it's posted actually on the finance page. It is in Board Docs, I believe. It was adopted the first meeting in September or the last meeting in August. So, it was a public document at that time, and that resides really in perpetuity on Board Docs for members of the community to see. But we could post it to the finance page adjacent to the draft budget.
And the main reason why I say that is because I know there's a period for public comment. I'd like them to make sure they know when they can do that as well.
When is the public hearing scheduled? Sorry, I'm quizzing you.
I believe it's March 1.
Okay.
It is March 1 during the regular business meeting.
And I think those key dates are on your future dates on the end of this agenda tonight, too.
And that'll be part of the business meeting?
Yes.
Correct.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Gessford.
I know earlier today during our work session, a lot of questions were asked of the superintendent, and a lot of explanations were explained, and I was very appreciative to that, so I hope that people can go back and look at that. It was, I think it was on recorded, and so they should be able to look at that. Again, the only thing that stands out for me in this budget, and I understand with us having all of those, and I'm only repeating what we've already talked about, but I think it's important to say this, that we have to absorb a lot of positions that were grant-funded, and I'm not big on absorbing grant-funded positions because they just, they make your budget larger. But what I really wish we would have more is more classroom frontline workers in this budget. And I know that some of those are frontline, but right now, we're only asking for three additional positions, which are counselors. And I just feel that in my heart that we really need a few more parapros and more teachers in the classrooms with what's coming up in our future with Kerwin, with the career ladder issue. So, I'm just putting that out there. I know that we have a difference in that, but I feel it's important for this board member to say that, so.
Mr. Stauffer.
Well, I would just add that the problem with the parapro situation is that there are positions to be filled, and there's nobody feeling them, to fill them. So, I think this budget does meet the needs of the system, and it's a bare-bones budget. And I just hope the county commissioners are listening because there's a lot of things going on in other counties where they're filling a lot of positions, and we're gonna be in competition with those counties to get staffs, so I hope they're listening downtown. This is a bare-bones budget. This superintendent has done that for five years, bare bones. There's no fluff in it because that's been one of the things that the Board since I've been on that we've demanded that he do, that he not have a lot of fluff, that he present a reasonable budget, and he's done so.
As you know, as Presiding Officer, I'm not able to put forth motions or to amend motions. I spoke at length this afternoon about my feelings with regard for the need for more counselors at the elementary level especially. And I also spoke at length about my feelings with regard to the Board of County Commissioners taking on the cost of school resource officers. I really feel that the payment, the salaries, and all that comes with that, supporting those officers, needs to be a part of the county's budget, falling under public safety. And if the county were to assume those costs, that would free up about $1 million for this Board to allocate for those things that could best serve our students, and not that school resource officers don't serve our students, but things that apply specifically to the education of students and their well-being. So, my thought is that if the Commissioners were to take on the cost of those SROs, that we could add additional counselors, social workers, or emotional support, staff, behavior specialists to our budget. So, those are my thoughts for the discussion.
Yeah, I really appreciated the budget discussion today because it was clear that a priority of Dr. Michael's staff, as well as, at least it sounded like consensus from the Board, that mental health and behavior issues are a top priority, as well as catching up after we finally get out of COVID, which are expensive propositions. So, I like the idea. We've been giving the Commissioners a pass for years on paying for school resource officers. Every other county in Maryland, except one, it's just two counties that the school boards pay for school resource officers. Every other one, it comes out of the county budget. And I think it's this year, when you look at our budget, they rightfully gave their police officers a raise, which immediately gets passed on to us, and it just shows that they should be the ones covering that in their budget. And in turn, we can double up on efforts to tackle some of these behavior issues that teachers and substitutes email me about all the time. And I think that it's really an opportunity to partner with the county commissioners to solve a real problem, and I hope they're willing to do it.
Any further discussion?
No, I just wanted to say, I was just gonna say exactly the same thing, only I'm sure Mr. Bickford put it a lot better than I could have, so thank you.
So, shall we move forward with the draft budget? Or is there the need to amend the budget, to adjust it according to the discussion?
Is there a main motion to adopt the budget?
There is.
I would say we just pass this motion because it takes, we have ownership of the budget now, and we can make revisions in the coming weeks, would be my thought.
Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to adopt the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2023 general fund budget, and then it will become the Board of Education's fiscal year 2023 draft general fund budget. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Student member concurs, and the Board now has a draft general fund budget for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm not certain if the budget's on the next agenda. Do we want to put that on for old business, further consideration of the Board's draft budget for the 15th? If it's not, would you like us to add that? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yes.
It seems like the Board has some other things on the.
Yes.
So, Dr. Prue, we'll add that to under old business, whatever that would be, revisions to the draft budget, Board of Education draft.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move to the next item under consideration this evening under new business, and that's the first reading of policy JFH, policy prohibiting bullying, harassment, or intimidation. Good evening, Mrs. Ram.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. In 2009, the Maryland State Board of Education, MSBE, adopted a model policy prohibiting bullying, harassment, and intimidation in schools at the direction of the Maryland General Assembly. The Washington County Board of Education proceeded to adopt its policy prohibiting bullying, harassment, and intimidation in 2009 using the state's model policy. State law requires MSBE to continuously update the model policy, and the Washington County Board of Education has updated its policy several times since its adoption in 2009 pursuant to updates to the state model. Most recently, the Maryland State Department of Education worked with local school systems in 2021 to revise and update the state's model policy, which MSBE approved on December 7, 2021. The Washington County Board of Education must now use the revised and updated model policy to revise and update its policy honor before February 15 of this year. The Board of Education conducted a work session on January 18, 2022, in order to provide Board members with the opportunity to review and ask questions on the state's model policy. The Board members are also presented with a draft of the proposed changes to policy JFH. Following the work session, the Policy Committee met on January 25, 2022, to review the proposed changes to policy JFH and make a recommendation on moving the proposed changes to policy JFH forward to the Board of Education for first reading.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JFH entitled, "Policy Prohibiting Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions or any discussion?
For me, I was, even though I'm Chair of the Policy Committee, I was unable to make the committee meeting, just being a close contact for COVID. Luckily, I tested negative. Thank you. But it looked to me, just reviewing the language changes, can you just go over some of the biggest changes in the policy compared to our previous one?
Yeah, the biggest change is the current policy, prior to revisions, lumped bullying, harassment, intimidation into one definitional section. And under the model policy, what they did is they broke that out into separate definitions for bullying, harassment, intimidation, and then kept the others. The other big change is the definitional section in our current policy as it stands very much mirrors the language of the law, the annotated code. The revisions put it into plain English, so it's easier to understand for staff, students, members of the public. The other big change, most notable change, is the proposed language would also include this provision for anyone at a school-sponsored event, so members of the public, families, staff, students, and any school-sponsored activity.
And this is for the most part based on, I don't wanna necessarily say state law, but at the state direction, we were required to review this, right?
Correct. So, MSDE has to review their policy every five years. We subsequently, in turn, have to do the same, and we are required to not adopt it on its face value, but make certain changes as required by law, so.
And you mentioned electronics in here as well. Was that a significant change, or had that been included?
That had been included. We've had that.
We just made it more clear?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's a change in the way we handle bullying, as in, if someone is being bullied, how that's being handled, there's no difference in the policy.
So, there's an accompanying regulation that will require some updates and changes. So, the regulation will be updated to reflect the changes that are in the policy here, as well as some of the forms are also updated, and we will make those same changes.
Disciplinary, though, action.
No, disciplinary action falls under a different Board policy.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we move to the vote. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JFH entitled, "Policy Prohibiting Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation." All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Student member concurs. We have another policy for first read to consider. This is the first reading of policy JE, student attendance.
Thank you. The Policy Committee is conducting a comprehensive review of policies contained in the student section of the Board of Education's policy manual. The Committee undertook a review of policy JE entitled, "Student Attendance," at its public work sessions on October 26 and December 14 of 2021 and January 25 of 2022, because the Board of Education had not updated its policy since 1990. The Committee is recommending several changes to the policy, which include updating the policy format, stating the legal requirements for student attendance, and setting forth the positive benefits of daily attendance. The Committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of the proposed changes at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JE entitled, "Student Attendance."
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion or any questions?
I have a question.
Uh huh.
When it says in here that you've changed, "Have regular school attendance," is there a standard that we have to have other than regular school attendance? Is there a day, a number?
Yes. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it is also spelled out in, there's a reference to the annotated code that does define how many days a student has to be before they're considered truant and for the year to count.
Any other questions? We'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JE entitled, "Student Attendance." All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Student member concurs.
Can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Because we were trying to get the bullying policy passed, we do have a special policy meeting, not really that special, but we're meeting more frequently in the first quarter, and that's next Tuesday, correct, at 11:30? So, if people have comments, feel free to email us. They do get reviewed at our committee meeting at the level there, and then we can come back, and if we see it as appropriate to make revisions, we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Okay, we'll move now to the superintendent's report, and that will be followed by the superintendent's update. So, it's Dr. Michael.
Okay, quite a few things this evening we want to run through here very quickly. Back before the winter break, we brought you a presentation regarding our school counseling and mental health workers, and we wanted to also provide the Board an update on our community schools program. And tonight, we have three people with us, Mr. Jacoby, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Duncan, to share an update. So, Mr. Jacoby, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. This evening, we're very happy to provide the public and the Board with an update on our community schools. our community schools efforts. We started last school year with a few community schools while we were, for the most part of the school year, doing virtual learning. It's a little bit of a struggle, but I think that moving into this year, having students in person, we've gained a lot of traction, and I think we're starting to see some of those efforts pay off in our community schools. This evening, Mr. Jackson is going to provide a little bit of detail about community schools as far as the purpose of a community school. He's going to talk about the funding source of community schools, not just for Washington County, but how they're funded across the state, and he'll share with you the location of our community schools, the ones that we started last year and this year. And then finally, we'll end with Ms. Duncan. She's our community school specialist. She's going to share information about the planning and logistics that are happening at the school level, and then just share a few highlights of some neat things that are happening in our community schools. And I do believe we have several community school specialists and principals in the audience today, and I know there's a few online as well. So with that being said, Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. Community schools evolved from the 2019 Blueprint Bill from Maryland, featured Senate Bill 1030. Schools are identified each year by using farm rates from the previous year. Currently, there are over 300 schools in Maryland that are recognized as community schools. Individual schools receive COP grant funding in the amount of $248,000 to pay for a coordinator and a healthcare practitioner, with the remaining balance to be used for wraparound services. Schools and Washington County Public Schools receiving COP funding have at least 70% of our student population on free and reduced meals. Within WCPS, we have 13 schools implementing this community schools philosophy. In the 2020-21 school year, Bester, Lincolnshire, Paintborne, and Salem Avenue Elementary Schools and Ruth Ann Primary School were identified as community schools and received COP funding. In addition to our original five schools, Eastern Hickory Elementary Schools are now receiving COP funding. We are planning for several schools to have a farm rate of at least 65% in the upcoming school year, and for additional two other schools in the 2023-2024 school year, the median requirement is 60% to receive COP funding. With this information, we're providing funding for these schools through the use of the ESER II grant to identify them as community schools right now.
Mr. Jackson, while you're on that slide, just as a reminder to the board, we shared this with you before. If you back up one, that list on the right are schools that we anticipate will be community schools, as Mr. Jackson just indicated, and we have prefunded what community schools will fund, at least in the big buckets of staffing, just trying to jump ahead of it to help meet the needs of our students. So we thought that was a strategic move, and I think it's benefiting those schools already. So hopefully, the community school funding will continue. These schools will meet the 55% threshold. They've all dropped a little bit, so we might have a couple in question, but that's how we plan to move some ESER-funded positions into the general fund or into what still will be a restricted grant fund, will be used in the community schools' money. So this is prefunded positions with the strategy of how they exit into the community school money. I just thought it related to the budget. I'm sorry.
No problem. The funding for each school to support the foundational pillars of community schools. Expanding learning opportunities are created to support academic growth, along with helping students develop socially, emotionally, and physically. These activities can be experienced through the arts, physical activity, and hands-on learning activities across subject areas. An essential component of community school is the meaningful and ongoing two-way communication with families and community partners. This allows for schools to establish strong relationships with stakeholders of the community. The strength of these relationships are cultivated, utilizing the expertise of all stakeholders within the school community. A number of our students have experiences outside of school, which impacts their development. By accessing the expertise for all stakeholders, we are supporting the whole child approach within the school community. Establishing these pillars allow for a school to serve as a hub of the community. Through these relationships, schools can be intentional in how they try to eliminate barriers for students and families that promote student achievement and positive experience. Some, listed on the slide, is some of the wraparound services a school can use their funding for to support students. Each school will identify their wraparound services best suited for their school through their needs assessment sent out to stakeholders. The needs assessment is sent to students, families, and school staff. Schools have engaged their community in varieties such as sending a survey out electronically, having copies at a family engagement activities, and providing copies in multiple languages. Participation in needs assessment is vital because the results of these needs assessments, along with school-wide data, are used to drive the implementation planning. Through this planning, the identification of activities and events are created to meet the needs of students and families. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Kim Duncan. She will share with you some of the activities that are happening in our schools.
As Mr. Jackson shared, the needs assessment and school-wide data are used to develop goals and plan initiatives. Each community school is using a variety of data to establish at least two goals on which they'll focus over the next three years. One goal is connected directly to the school improvement plan, while the other goal focuses specifically on family engagement. Therefore, community school goals will be different for each school as they are tailored directly to the needs that align with those actual individual school needs. Sample goals may include improving school-wide attendance, decreasing rates of chronic absenteeism, improving PBISS outcomes, or supporting literacy gains, again, whatever best aligns with the needs of that individual school and their families. The family engagement goal, again, determined at the school level, sets targets for engaging families and involving families in the school community, and identifies opportunity to involve families in the education of their children. Being intentional in the planning and implementation of programs, initiatives, and activities is critical to ensure community schools are meeting the needs of their students and families. The planning process includes involvement of community school advisory committees composed of teachers, staff, school administration, community organizations, parents, community members, and, as we grow at the middle and high school level, students. As a committee, after reviewing the data, historical approaches, and incorporating the feedback provided from the needs assessment, events, activities, and initiatives are planned to align with each goal. Community schools take the entire community, and community engagement and collaboration is key. As a core pillar of the community school philosophy, collaborating with community organizations provides students and families access to critical services to support meeting basic needs and positively impacting student learning outcomes. We truly have amazing things happening. We're in 13 schools, and there is so much amazing that's happening across the board. We have before-school programming going on for our late start schools. We have family resource nights, after-school extended learning programs, and clubs, community building events, activities for middle school students, and soon-to-be adult education and English as second language classes for our families right in their schools. We have an incredible team of community school counselors and specialists who work hand-in-hand with very passionate and committed administrators to help us implement this philosophy in buildings. And so at this time, we're actually going to highlight the work of two schools in particular, Hickory Elementary School and Salem Avenue. So to start, Hickory is one of those first-year schools. They came on this fall as a community school with Julie Matheny serving as our community school counselor. And I want to picture us from that event, but Hickory literally hit the ground running with family engagement this fall. They had over 150 kids and their families participate in a color run at the school that also served as a family resource there. And as we said, strong relationships with community organizations and providers is key to this work, and it resulted in over 10 community organizations being on hand to provide resources and opportunities to families. Family and staff responses to the community needs assessment indicated a need to have more of these family engagement events. We've seen that across the board in all 13 schools. Everyone's ready to come out of COVID and engage in schools in any way, and as a result, Hickory has actually developed a series of monthly opportunities for students and their families. Pictured up there is pictures from an event they held just before winter break where 255 students and family members came to break out, very safely COVID-distant event, and literacy activity around the Polar Express. At all Hickory events, like they are, as Mr. Jackson indicated, at every single event, surveys are completed by the participants, and all of that data and information is used to plan future events to ensure we are meeting the needs of the families. And Salem Avenue Elementary? Salem Avenue is in their second year as a community school with Dominic Giannato serving as the community school counselor. And during the needs assessment process with Salem Avenue, after-school programming was identified as one of the top needs, in addition to a need for diverse enrichment activities and extended learning, community partnerships and extended learning, and the availability of transportation for extended learning. As Mr. Jackson shared earlier, community engagement and collaborative leadership are pillars of the community school. So after months of planning with Salem Avenue staff, WCPS leadership, Girls, Inc., the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and On Track Washington County, after the bell, a comprehensive after-school program was implemented free of charge for any interested third through fifth grader at Salem Avenue. Community collaboration and creative partnerships are the heart of the After the Bell program at Salem, and over 50 students have participated in this three-day week program. It includes tutoring, social-emotional learning, leadership skill development, academic enrichment. We were able to meet that door-to-door transportation need of families, and it culminates in a family showcase where the students have the opportunity to show what they've learned to their friends and family. This program is possible thanks to the incredible work of community partners, and in your presentation, there's a link to an article in the Herald Mail. Students are now in their second session and have had the opportunity to participate in academic enrichment in STEM areas, health and wellness, yoga, sports, fitness, music, arts, they were rocking out with violins the other day, as well as Salem Pride, a team focused on school beautification and community service projects. This creative collaboration highlights the goals of the community school, to serve as a hub of the community where they can meet the needs of kids and families and a safe and comfortable welcoming space, which is our schools. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't know if there's any questions for the team or not.
I do have a question. How does the Title I program in the elementary schools that are Title I, how does that program interface with?
That's a very good question.
What's going on? I heard arts, I heard PE, and I know Title I is geared to reading and math, but I also know that they share the common piece of family engagement and extended learning, so...
Yeah, so there's strong collaboration between the community school counselor and the Title I person at the school, as well as the school improvement team and the principal. So Kim could probably share what that collaboration looks like, but it's conversations that are ongoing, so that we recognize there's an overlap with some of the services that they provide, but through that collaboration, they're able to work with one another and do, you know, provide supports and services for students and for families.
Absolutely. There's extensive collaboration across that, really with an effort on enhancing and expanding access to services, not duplicating efforts. So in terms of, if we just were to talk about a historical event that would have been funded by Title I supports, now community schools comes in, and we can utilize that funding to enhance what's being offered, maybe provide transportation to an event that there may or may not have been funding for, do whatever we need to do to enhance and provide additional access.
Great. Thank you. I think it's wonderful that the ESER grant funds are being used to extend the concept to the middle and high school, because it was a concern that Title I only reached the elementary schools when we know that there is great need at the other two levels as well, so it's a great use of ESER money to do that.
Another thing we're going to see out of the community schools, there's going to be a lot more money added to this, so as the schools progress, there starts to be per-student allotments, and long-term overplanning is some of our reading tutors and things like that. As the reading tutor grant ends, we'll pull reading tutors in to help support academic needs at some of our schools. We have tutors, other resources like that. So again, as part of the pre-planning of our efforts of how to use ESER and watching what was happening with Curb and trying to coordinate all these things to kind of come in together with timing of how to pre-support schools in amidst a COVID on top of everything else, but then how to go ahead and start transitioning schools on the front end. So thank you all very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for the work.
Our next presentation tonight, I'm going to ask Dr. Pugh to come forward. We're going to recognize National School Counseling Week. Ms. Huffers with her.
So I have a proclamation from the board, and I'll present to Helen Huffer, our supervisor of school counseling. The proclamation reads, "Whereas school counselors are leaders, advocates, and collaborators in schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as those traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors work with teachers, parents, and other educators to help students further their educational, personal, and social growth and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors provide a safe, trusting environment that respects each unique student in allowing them to freely explore ideas and express feelings and behaviors, and whereas school counselors play an integral role in the education process through comprehensive developmental school counseling programs that enable all students to achieve success in school, therefore be it proclaimed that February 7th through the 11th, 2022, is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National School Counseling Week, and this is presented this first day of February 2022." Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor Huffer, please.
Yeah.
I was going to say thank you, Dr. Michael, Dr. Pugh, and the Board of Education. We greatly appreciate all of your support for the school counseling department and appreciate all the work that they do every day for students and families. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next recognition is regarding our We the People State Competition. A familiar face back in the day when we were able to bring our students forward. This would be the last person to introduce, but at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Berman if he would introduce our topic, recognize our students, and then certainly Ms. Vasek. Mr. Berman?
Thanks. Good evening, Dr. Michael and members of the board. Tonight, we would like to recognize students who competed and were victorious at the We the People State Competition. Students competed virtually on January 15th, 2022. We the People is a simulated congressional hearing, providing students an opportunity to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding of constitutional principles and ideas. These students will prepare for the national competition to be held in late April. This is the seventh year in a row Boonsborough High School has advanced to the national competition. Before we go any further, I'd like to acknowledge that Dr. Mike Kahannick, principal of Boonsborough High School, is joining us in the audience, and this evening, we are joined by Ms. Ashley Vasek, the team advisor, and she will accept the recognition on behalf of her students and student coaches. The students include Emily Bauer, Michaela Bledsoe, Ally German, Drew Glines, Noah Hall, Elizabeth Happel, Anna Harshaw, Nora Hart, Natalie Hogan, Haley Kukubey, Jasmine Leonard, Max Margob, Evelyn McGivney, Patty Punchesudi, Liam Ryan, Max Simpson, and Isa Youssef, with student coaches Kirsten Cullen, Corinne Line, and Olivia Stan. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Vasek, that's quite a string of wins.
Thank you.
So congratulations to you and to the students and to all the students in previous years. They do us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Kahannick's getting a two for tonight, so good things are happening at Boonsborough High School. This time, I'd like to call Mr. James Alshare to come forward, and he has a special presentation regarding the Key Scholarship Award.
Good evening. On behalf of the school board and school superintendent, Dr. Michael, and the Office of Career Technical Education, we'd like to recognize Boonsborough High School's agriculture teacher, Ms. Elizabeth Comstock. During the National Association of Agricultural Educators Convention in November of 2021, Ms. Comstock was recognized by the N A A E for her exemplary performance and dedication to agricultural education. Ms. Comstock was one of 37 agricultural teachers nationwide who received the 2021 National Association of Agricultural Educators Teachers Turn the Key Scholarship Award. This award is given to young teachers as a means of encouraging them to remain in the profession, as well as to recognize their participation in professional activities. Ms. Comstock, thank you for your dedication to your profession, your school, and your students. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening and being recognized. Congratulations. This is part of a dynamic duo down at Boonsborough, and a number of our ag programs are very, very strong, teachers like that that make it such. Can I ask Dr. Willow at this time, we're going to recognize CTE Month, so Dr. Willow would present the citation to Ms. Ross Scher.
Yes, I would be honored to. Good evening, Dr. Michael, President Williams, members of the board. Whereas college, or excuse me, whereas career and technology education offers students the opportunity to gain countless skills necessary for true college and career readiness. And whereas, students in career and technology education programs participate in hands-on, meaningful learning that improves the quality of their education and achievement. And whereas, students experience authentic career opportunities, which enables them to make strategic decisions about their academic coursework and career pathways. And whereas, career and technology education prepares students for higher education and fulfilling careers, building on-the-job experience and attaining industry-recognized credentials. And whereas, Washington County employers have greater access to a qualified workforce, ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, and continued economic growth. Therefore, be it proclaimed, that February 2022 is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National Career and Technology Education Month, presented this first day of February 2022.
Thank you. On behalf of the 85 career and technical education teachers throughout Washington County Public Schools, thank you for this evening's proclamation and for recognizing February as Career and Technical Education Month. Washington County Schools currently has 3,766 students in grades 6 through 12 enrolled in one of our 11 career clusters throughout our school system. We currently have four chapters of the Future Farmers of America, which they'll be celebrating their week coming up November 19th through 26th, it's FFA Week. One chapter of the Future Business Leaders of America, and our Skills USA team covers all programs at Washington County Technical High School. This Saturday, our Skills USA team will be competing in the Region 6 competition hosted by Washington County Technical High School for a chance to move on to states and hopefully nationals. We wish all of our teams good luck, and again, thank you for this evening's recognition and proclamation.
Thank you, John, for sharing that. And now, we're going to move on to our next presentation. We want to provide the board an update on our apprenticeship program. It's been going very, very strong. We may recall, we started out as a pilot, and I think at this point, I think we have the best apprenticeship program in the state of Maryland, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Ross Scher and Ms. Wendy Moore.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us the time to speak this evening about the youth apprenticeship program in Washington County Public Schools. Joining me tonight is Ms. Wendy Moore, our youth apprenticeship coordinator. Tonight, we will be providing an overview of our program, as well as a short video.
Youth apprenticeship is a unique, work-based learning program that brings WCPS students and local employers together to create skilled labor through technical education and mentorship. Youth apprentices participate in a minimum of 450 on-the-job training hours related to their area of instruction and are able to begin as early as their junior year. This school year, with the addition of some of the tri-state area's largest employers, including Washington County Public Schools, WCPS has been able to offer more apprenticeship opportunities than ever before. In addition to earning wages of up to $21 an hour, apprentices can earn up to four high school credits and a Maryland State Skill Certificate. Outreach and recruitment are an essential part of the apprenticeship process. Our program partners with the Maryland Department of Labor to educate employers on the benefits of apprenticeship and recruit for potential job placement opportunities. Through a dedicated apprenticeship website and other communication outlets, these opportunities are marketed and advertised to students, parents, counselors, teachers, and school administrators. Students reflect on and communicate their academic and technical education experience through the application process, which includes a cover letter, resume, and recommendations from both a teacher-related instruction and a school counselor. Apprenticeships are competitive. Applicants participate in an interview process and follow an employer's normal hiring procedure. In addition to on-the-job training, one-to-one employer mentorship provides apprentices with a guidance and constructive advice that plays a critical role in their career development. Apprentice progress is monitored and evaluated through employer engagement and feedback, self-reflection, and continuous coordinator visits to both school and work sites.
These are the cluster areas that we currently have students placed for the apprenticeships at this time. We look forward to expanding these offerings through our CTE office, classrooms, and business partners. This fall, we added a website dedicated to marketing apprenticeship. We use multiple outlets of communication to share information and announcements about our upcoming apprenticeship opportunities. Once the apprenticeship is confirmed, we send out an announcement to all schools to share with eligible students. When a student secures an apprenticeship, a follow-up announcement is sent to acknowledge and congratulate the student.
Apprenticeships give employers access to a pipeline of young, capable talent and provide the benefit of recruitment and retention support. Through local partnerships, there are also grant-funded opportunities currently available, including 75% wage reimbursement. An apprenticeship allows students to gain marketable industry skills through CTE and academic coursework and on-the-job experience, acquire confidence through hands-on application, and enables them to develop a competitive advantage that can lead to increased wages and a head start on a rewarding career. Apprenticeship is an investment in the future of Washington County, designed to address the lack of on-the-job experiences for our students, provide gainful employment for our community, and address the need for and the shortage of skilled workers. Apprenticeship plays a critical part in our local workforce development.
The future goals of the Office of Career and Technical Education will be to continue to have multiple apprenticeships as part of each career and technical education completer, increase awareness of the value of apprenticeship to all stakeholders, increase awareness and value in career and technical education, and build strong partnerships and equity into apprenticeship through mentorship, engaging students, and connecting to the community. In conclusion, we'd like to thank all of our business partners who support the program and provide apprenticeship opportunities for our students. We'd also like to thank all of our school administrators, counselors, and teachers who work to prepare our students for these opportunities. Thank you, Dr. Michael, for your leadership and support of career technical education and youth apprenticeship. Our goal moving forward is to expand our offerings for all students and to increase awareness of the value of the apprenticeship program throughout the Washington County business community. At this time, we have a brief video to share that spotlights one of our engineering apprenticeships.
The apprenticeship brings a college-level experience to our students, being able to go and work with a professional every single day and learn what they're doing in addition to what we're doing here is a big add to our program. I like how it kind of challenges me. It's really interesting to have something work perfectly great the first day and then have to kind of break down the next day and kind of having to figure out workarounds and like how to deal with problems.
I feel like what I've learned about myself is that I'm not one to back down from this challenge.
A key aspect of being in the apprentice program is you learn how our equipment benefits the community. The generation rolling into the workforce today wants to know that their work has meaning, it will impact in a positive way the world around them. There's a benefit of having an apprentice who understands the benefit, who's tied to the community.
Our apprentices bring excitement for the work we do, that they share with the rest of our team members. Their ability to ask questions and try to learn more has been able to help us generate new ideas.
If you're a local business, I would encourage you to engage in apprentice program. These are very motivated employees because they want to learn, and for you as a business, it's a relatively low-cost way to do a long-term interview.
With us being partnered with Washington County, you have the ability to talk to classes, and we're starting to form relationships, I think, through you, which has been really positive, and that's been a big help for the recruitment, too.
They're very supportive of me, and everyone seems to be really willing to help me.
GLG isn't one of those companies that's just like, you're going to come here, and you're going to work, and then you're going to go home. I feel like the company is more trying to get you to explore your options and try to see what works best for you.
Thank you, Kim, for sharing. Our apprenticeship program, again, is very strong. Europe and other places have been using apprenticeships for a long while as part of their education. I think we're going to see this a major move going forward in our public education system, and I'm very, very proud of the efforts that we've had so far, and I look forward to where it's going to go in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple other items. Second, marking period grades have been posted for parents that have Parent and Student View. If you don't have an account, you can go to our website and look on our homepage and then contact your local school, and they'll help you get set up with the code. That's the quickest way to see your students' grades or ongoing to see your students' grades or child's grades. So those are available. The other thing I would mention, we're hoping to kick off our dress code work group. I know that Tanisha's asked me about this a number of times. The next couple of days, up on our website, up on our Facebook, will be an opportunity to make application to be on that committee. We'll be looking for six students from various backgrounds, six school representatives, and six parents to be represented on the committee. So a committee of about 18. Dr. Pew's going to lead that committee. I think they're going to meet virtually at least three times during March, and then they'll be sharing that work with me, and we'll be working on our regulations for the dress code, which will go into effect for the new school year next year. The last thing I have for today, and the video completes, it'll be the end of my report for this evening, I think it ties together the two things. We had our Bachi championship, county championship, a week ago Saturday. Had a lot of teams there, a lot of participation. I stopped by for an hour or so, it was just a great time. Unfortunately, they're not having state competition. We've had many of our local teams win state Bachi, but they're not having that this year, so unfortunately, it ended at our county level. But Bachi ended, but tonight's also CTE Month. One of our engineering classes helped one of our Bachi students be able to participate this year. So this will actually be a third piece for Dr. Kahannick. It's all about Boonsborough High School tonight, I think. This is just an amazing story, and I'm just going to left the story share for itself here in the video.
At Boonsborough High School, Brady Weaver is a household name.
Brady's a well-known celebrity at Boonsborough High School. Everybody knows who Brady is, and Brady knows pretty much who everybody is.
In a crowd of his peers, Brady is one of a kind. He was diagnosed with Duchenne muscular dystrophy in kindergarten, and for more than a decade now, he has overcome challenges his classmates can only imagine. One teacher, his adaptive physical education teacher, has seen Brady face and overcome countless obstacles.
His overall goal was accessing physical education, so that's what we've worked on all the way through elementary school, middle school, and high school. Just spending that time together, we've really gotten to know each other well.
This year, she's also Brady's coach for Boonsborough's Unified Bachi Team. When he started playing his freshman year, he used his own strategy to get the ball down the court.
He'd put it on just above his knee and drop it, and he was able to set an angle using both his chair and flexion and his foot. Just over time, that ability has decreased.
My junior year, I started having trouble rolling the ball off my foot. Ms. Meredith, my deputy PE teacher, asked me if I would like to use the ramp, and I told her no, I was not ready. I said no because I wanted to do it on my own.
But Brady eventually had a change of heart, and his coach had a plan. Knowing a ramp would need to be custom-made, she called on the engineering program at Washington County Technical High School.
And what we said was, we can't change the height, and we want it to be a part of him. And by making it a part of him, they made it a part of his chair.
So the students divided and conquered, working in small groups to construct each piece of the ramp.
Up here at the top, there's two main pieces that hold it to his chair. This piece here, there's a little bracket that there's a piece that holds his leg in. That piece comes out, and this sits right in that bracket and holds it securely to the chair.
They engineered each part and used 3D printers in their classroom to create prototypes and the final product.
And he used the soluble supports whenever he printed it to make the bearings underneath, that way they would roll and be able to move and not just be like frozen, to just slide on the floor.
With Brady back on his competitive game, he wanted to show the aspiring engineers just how much their work was paying off.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Tech High engineering students and Mr. Thomas, thank you for building my Bachi ramp for me. I like the way my ball rolls farther using the ramp. I also like the way the ramp attaches to my chairs, so I can drive around with it.
And in the midst of all the engineering and design, there are even some personal touches, the Tech High students included.
Blue is my favorite color, and orange is our school color. Thank you for putting my name on the ramp. It makes me feel famous.
It's been amazing getting to see the excitement in Brady, getting to see the excitement of the students working with him, helping him achieve something that he is not able to do on his own, and just knowing that he's so thankful and appreciative of it, that it's making it all better for the students to see that, too.
It's a satisfying feeling to see something you designed with others come together as one whole piece and work amazingly.
It just shows that like engineering can go farther than just like mechanical problems or something. It can go into like other people's like personal life and help them with their challenges that they would face in a daily process or anything.
We all go into public education to make the biggest impact we can on kids and to actually celebrate those few moments where you can say, I actually was part of something that was life-changing. And this, to me, is the definition of life-changing. It's exactly what public education should represent.
Thank you for making my Bachi season better this year. I hope one day, when you are all engineers, you can help me play basketball. Thank you for being so nice to me. Your new friend, Brady Weaver.
It's an incredible story. Want to thank Brady, want to thank his teachers, his support there at the school, also the engineering department, so just, it was a great, a great video that just kind of sums it up. I think it's one of those things, I used to hear somebody say, if that one doesn't, you know, light your fire, your wood must be wet. So I just think that's a tremendous story, and again, we're grateful to everybody that participated in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you've never seen a unified sports athletic event, Bachi ball is the winter sport and so forth, you've got to go and see one because this is true sportsmanship. Nobody cares who wins. You'll see kids from the other team rooting for kids from the opposing team, and it's just great. You'll see kids with physical challenges like Brady, kids who don't have on the same team helping each other. It's just great to witness and see. It's one of the best programs that has ever come along in education to allow these kids, these children, these students, to be part of athletics.
Add to that, too, Mr. Stauffer, unified sports, it's wonderful because you have kids with limited abilities and kids with other abilities, and they all come together to help each other. I was there, I saw Brady. It was wonderful, and it's always a pleasure to watch these kids come together and play sports. You're right, it doesn't matter who wins, they all win, and it's a great experience.
We will move now to personnel actions with Dr. Pew. Dr. Pew, good evening.
Good evening. As discussed earlier in closed session today, there are a number of staff changes for your consideration, and at this time, I ask for your approval of personnel actions.
And use their motion.
President, William?
I move to approve the personnel actions. I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, as presented in closed session. Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? I will move to the vote. We're voting to approve personnel actions as discussed earlier. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Those abstaining? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Okay, reports to the board. We have the presentation of the single audit with Mr. David Brandenburg, Executive Director of Finance.
Good evening, President Williams and members of the board and Dr. Michael. You have before you tonight the single audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2021. Mr. Sampson of the audit firm Zelen Kozak Axle Rod is here to talk about their reports. Copies have been distributed to the audit committee, Maryland State Department of Education, and several legislative committees as required by law. The single audit report discloses all of our federal grant spending for each one of the grants during the year. This year's expenditures are much higher due to the special pandemic relief grants that we received, which will affect reports through fiscal year 2025. I'd like to thank my staff for all their good work throughout the year and the substantial assistance given to the audit team. Also, I'd like to recognize the conscientious work of the accounts payable and payroll staff who provide excellent service to this organization. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Sampson to review his audit reports and any other highlights he wants to share with you, and we'll also be glad to take any questions at any time.
Thank you, David. Good evening. First up, I would like to thank David and his staff for giving us all the information in a timely fashion to complete the single audit report. A couple of required communications. We had no difficulties while performing the audit. We also didn't have disagreements with management over any of the content in the single audit report. We obtained the required representations from management prior to issuing the report. So the single audit report, it consists of two opinions. One is based on, it's our opinion on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters for an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And there's also a second opinion basically on our testing of the major programs for the year under audit. And there's a schedule of expenditure of federal awards. So this basically lists out all the federal awards of the school system for the year ended June 30th, 2021. And as David mentioned, it did approximately double from the prior year due to the funding from the federal government for the pandemic. So if you have the reports in front of you, really page 12 is a summary of, it's a schedule of findings and question cost, and this really summarizes everything in the single audit. And it really says, our opinion on the financial statements were unmodified, as that was previously presented in a previous board meeting. As far as internal control over financial reporting, we had no findings that were considered material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. There was no material noncompliance to the financial statements either. For the federal awards, we tested four major programs this year. They were the Child Nutrition Cluster, the Coronavirus Relief Program, the Summer School Grant, and also the Education Stabilization Program. So for these four programs, as far as we had no findings over compliance related to these four programs, and also no findings related to internal control over compliance related to those programs. And lastly, there was a schedule expenditure of federal awards. This was prepared by David and his staff. We issued an opinion in relation to the financial statements that it was materially stated as a whole. So at this time, that was all I had to present to the board unless there is any questions.
Are the programs that you audit, are they chosen randomly?
It's a risk-assess approach, so there's a threshold. If you still have page 12 open, you'll see towards the bottom of the page, there's a dollar threshold to distinguish between type A and B programs of a million, approximately 1.4 million. So anything over that, any program with expenditures over that amount, if it hasn't been audited in the prior two years, we automatically have to test that program. And so we go through a risk-based approach, and based on there's a number of, these are considered type A, anything above that amount. And if you don't test them, then you have to do an assessment over programs below that amount, and they're called type B programs. And we picked up on type B program this year.
Thank you. Mr. Brandenburg, congratulations for having all the Xs on the correct line. You and your department do fine work, just fine work. We're very fortunate to have you and to have the fine staff that you oversee.
It's good to hear the U.S. Marshal's not going to be taking you out in handcuffs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, under reports to the board, we have board member committee reports. And Dr. Zentmeyer, would you like to begin with curriculum instruction?
I will meet here Monday, February 28th at 1:30.
Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Guesford.
We just recently had a meeting and waiting for the minutes to come in. I'll read them at the next meeting and give a report, but the following meeting will be March 22nd.
March 22nd, thank you. Mr. Evans, Finance?
Yeah, we just met on this past Thursday. We received many updates regarding current expenditures and some grant spending updates. And then the next meeting will be on February 22nd at 9:00 a.m.
9:00, Human Resources? Human Resources will be meeting again on Tuesday, April 12th at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Baker, Policy Review and Development?
Policy Committee met on January 25th discussing the bullying, harassment, and intimidation policy, as well as student attendance, which were reviewed tonight. Also, at the last meeting, they discussed policy setting and legislative program, which are scheduled for first read at an upcoming meeting. And at our next meeting, Dr. Willow is going to attend to talk through school-sponsored trips. The next meeting's scheduled for next Tuesday, February 8th at 11:30 here.
Thank you. I have a very brief report from the Legislative Response Team, and that is that yesterday, staff submitted on behalf of Washington County Public Schools testimony expressing support of House Bill 214, juveniles reportable offenses. And this bill is to be heard on February 2nd, I believe that's tomorrow, by the Judiciary Committee. We should have received an email with an attachment that was that exact testimony that was submitted by our legal department. Mr. Gupta, do you have anything?
Yes. The General Assembly for the Washington County Association of Student Councils was postponed to an undetermined date, and I will update you guys on that whenever that is decided.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say that the May Legislative Committee will meet next Tuesday at 10 o'clock? So we'll find out what the boys and ladies are doing in Annapolis.
Thank you. Okay, that takes care of our reports to the board. We'll move to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have a long list that was included in your packet. I'm not going to go through that list. Twenty things listed. If you have any issues or questions about any of those things on that list, please let me know. And if you have any suggestions for a future agenda item, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know so that we can place that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. We'll move to board member comments. Mr. Gupta, would you like to begin down there?
I'd like to thank all the teachers who came out today. It's always great to see a full-ish auditorium. Yeah, it's always great to see teachers.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Exactly. It's good to see teachers. It's good to see everybody that's here this evening. It's always nice to see the public and our staff represented and coming to see what's going on in Board of Education. So thank you very much for taking time out of your evening to spend some time with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Baker? Mr. Stauffer?
Just a quick thing. I was one of several people from the board who has helped judge the PBIS drawings at MK Dow. I enjoyed doing that the other day. I stopped in, and I thought I had to make an appointment, and they said, no, it's right here in the office, just sit down and do it. And I also confirmed a time to be a guest reader at Greenbrier for a third grade class. I'm going to be reading Mr. Peabody's Apples, and that was suggested to me. I wasn't familiar with it, so I asked my wife, he's a retired elementary teacher. I said, you ever heard? Oh, yes. She said, I believe Madonna helped write that book. I said Madonna. So I got it and I read it, and it's quite an interesting little book. It's got a good storyline to it. I enjoyed it, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Guesford?
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One thing that we did speak about, we spoke about a lot of things in the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday. One thing that I would like to see us at least consider, I don't know how feasible it is, that's what Dr. Michael and his team is up for. I would like to see the possibility of, excuse me, adding some grant funds to maybe pay teachers to come in and do some planning, maybe create some video lessons, whatever it may be. You know, this could be helpful when teachers are covering classes, rather than just give the kids a packet to do to keep them busy for an hour. You know, they could go on to continue with their lessons and then have some kind of work to do to show they understood the material, kind of keep them up with their learning or maybe even use it for home and hospital teaching or whatever it may be. So there's one thing that I would like to see. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it or even if it's possible at all. So you know, just something that I was thinking about. And also to reiterate what Stan said about unified sports, one thing that probably no one knows in this room is that, and I have no clue how long ago it was started, but it was a state law that required these unified sports to start. And years and years ago, when I was still teaching at Meade High School in Anne Rundle County, I was the first ever Bachi coach for Meade High School. And our team actually, like you said, no one really pays that much attention to how much you win or lose, but we were actually the state runner-ups that year. And it is, you know, it was one of those things where no one knew what they were getting into. It was literally the first year of these unified sports, and you just didn't know how it was going to work. So I have no clue about Bachi. I'm not Italian, so I don't know how they work, how the games are played. But you know, you learn, and the experience that it provides for the kids, where they otherwise may not be able to participate in a school sport, it provides the school spirit. But also, I don't know if you noticed in the background of that video that was played, the crowds that come out, the kids come out and see the kids play. You know, it's really, really great experience for everyone involved. You know, some kids get the ability to participate in community service, other kids get the ability to participate in the school event, and it's really a great thing for the kids to be able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Dr. Zentmeyer?
I play words with friends, and this week's solo challengers are all African-American educators. It's a Who's List in education, and they reminded me so much of why I love this profession. My favorite is Mary McLab Bethune. She was amazing. Her parents were former slaves, and she started in cotton fields at age five. She really did walk uphill five miles to school. That's from my dad, who assures me he did the same thing. And she was the youngest, almost the youngest of 17 kids. Her hope was to be a missionary in Africa, but instead she became an entrepreneur, a philanthropist, a humanitarian, a civil rights activist, and was advisor to three presidents. She started a private school in Daytona, which became a university. She served as a university president when there weren't any women university presidents. She started, Bethune-Cookman School had her students up at 5:00 for Bible study and sometimes went as long as 9:00 p.m. in the evening. She was the sole African-American on the committee, the U.S. delegation that created the United Nations Charter. She founded a hospital. Eighteen schools in America bear her name, and this is what's on her tombstone. I leave to you hope. I leave to you love. I leave you the challenge of developing confidence in one another. I leave you a thirst for education. I leave you a respect for the use of power. I leave you faith. I leave you racial dignity. I leave you a desire to live harmoniously with your fellow men. I leave you a responsibility to our young people. Thank you for being here tonight and for assuming that responsibility to our young people. Great words to live by. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Thank you to all who came out this evening to share this time with us. Colleagues, thank you for a great day of meetings. I was reminded by all those included in the superintendent's report of the many great things that are happening in Washington County Public Schools. This has certainly been a trying time with COVID, but we have so much to be grateful for, and there's so much good that's happening. So thank you to all who make those wonderful things happen for our kids. Dr. Michael, if you don't have any final words for us?
Probably one other thing of interest. I know we have Skills USA, but that's kind of an event you really can't see real up close, I don't think, a lot of times because it's students being judged and things like that. But I know who Mr. Stauffer went last week. I apologize if it got canceled, but we have a very large robotics competition going on on Saturday. I think it's 9:30 to 4:30. I think there's 40 teams that are registered to be part of that. It's always really kind of pretty cool to watch. I've taken my grandsons before, so it's interesting to watch our robotics competition every year. So it's one of a number of them, but this is a large regional one. Like I say, if you're looking for something to do on Saturday, you can stop by there for a few minutes and kind of get a feel for what a lot of our students are doing, just in one robotics area.
Thank you.
South Hagerstown High School, if I didn't miss you.
Okay, so if there's nothing further, then we stand adjourned. Thank you.